My only motive is a firm belief an informed electorate will make an informed decision come election time that will ultimately benefit us all. If you share my belief or would like to donate blank videotapes to help me with my expenses, please call me at 598-5120. Thank you, Terry Reynolds. All videotapes of the City of Fulton Common Council meeting are available to rent free of charge to the public at Video World. Thank you.
...meeting of the Common Council. And there's a special cause for celebration today because it didn't rain today. But according to the forecaster, it's gonna rain tomorrow. I hope nobody here lives on the Nile Lake.
Did it rain today?
Did it rain today?
Yeah.
Yeah, see, that shows I was hard at work, so I didn't even notice. Just trying to drum up a little backing for a raise. That's what I thought. Thanks, Diana. You're all hard. After last week. What happened last week? I was gonna say...
Two weeks ago.
Oh, okay. Did I do something wrong last two weeks ago? I what?
Hour, you call a meeting and you dwell outside and you stay off-site for an hour and ten minutes and you come back in and move on.
So, once in a year and a half. Okay? You know, you gotta give me a little room. Not too much. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor.
Present.
First ward.
Here.
Second ward.
Here.
Third ward.
Here.
Fourth ward.
Here.
Fifth ward.
Here.
Sixth ward.
Here.
All present, your honor.
Thank you. Item one, please.
At a meeting the council held on April 6th, the clerk was authorized to advertise for public hearing for this meeting of April 20th. Of the relative to a proposed amendment to the Plumbing Board Rules and Regulations, the mayor has now declared the public hearing open.
Yes. Any comment? Amendment to the Plumbing Board Rules and Regulations.
What's the amendment?
What's the amendment?
We're green.
Al, are you here somewhere?
Yes, sir.
Do you wanna tell everybody what it's about, please? He's the chairman of the Plumbing Board. Al Suetary.
Well, we're merely tightening the code for plumbers. Is this on? We're tightening the code for the plumbing businesses in town, mostly. For regulation of plumbers' plumbing business in town and codes and regulations. The specific changes have to do mostly with our own plumbers.
Right. Excuse me, Al. Wanna look at it?
Yeah. Some simple things like we had a shelving requirement. Plumbers wanted to shelve their license. They could do so for three years at $5 a year. But the Plumbing Board and local plumbers agree that a license should be worth $50, whether it's being used or not. That's our fee. And since we have some plumbers around town that have shelved licenses and are still doing plumbing, I think the $50 fee for the license should stand whether it's active or inactive. When you buy a driver's license, whether you're driving or not, you still pay for the driver's license. So, one of the changes will be $5 fee raised to $50, which is more revenue for the city. Plumbing Board doesn't get it, although I would like to have some of that. The shelving life was three years. We've raised that to five, simply because someone may be disabled three or four years or out of the country for some reason. There's no reason he should lose his license, something he's competent for and to contest for. So, we've increased that to five. That matches Oswego, our sister city. We're trying to uniform both codes so that there's no discrepancies between us. Another change was we're adding a law stating that any plumber who does have a shelved license and works for another licensed plumber, he has to be on the plumber's payroll, working for that licensed plumber. Once his license is shelved, he can no longer do plumbing around the city for himself because it requires insurance, fees, permits, and so on. And the stipulation will be that if he's caught doing plumbing for himself under the pretense of working for another licensed plumber, then both he and that licensed plumber will have to answer to the board. We're trying to regulate licensing amongst ourselves, first of all. One of the other changes, we had some discrepancies about a year ago. We had a $200,000 special license fee for out-of-town plumbers. And that was an absorbing fee. In fact...
Excuse me, Al. That was the fee?
No, that was the, I'm sorry, the requirement to get a special license.
In other words, it had to be a job of at least $200,000.
$200,000 or more. We have no $200,000 jobs in Fulton. So, that's not fair to outside plumbers.
In effect, that would exclude outside plumbers from doing a special job.
You would.
No, I say that requirement...
That would. That would exclude them, right. So, we've lowered that to $100,000, which is more of a reasonable figure for the City of Fulton. We wanna give them a crack at it. Now, if we do lose that $100,000 job and it goes to Syracuse or Lafayette or Watertown and it leaves the City of Fulton in Oswego County, we're losing not only the job, the revenue, the taxes. So, the fee, which was $100 for $200,000, has been raised to $1,000 for $100,000. So, that puts outside plumbers in the ballpark to have a chance. If our plumbers in town can't get together and do one of those larger jobs, then we deserve to lose the job. But we wanna give everyone outside a chance. Another regulation being changed is requirement for sitting down to take a master's license. In the past, it used to be five years under New York State Code. Five years under a master plumber, in the field, practical experience. But in the past, we have taken schooling, sales, water department, everything other than practical plumbing. So, what I wanna do is get it back to five years under a master plumber. The reason for that is I want a master plumber over that journeyman, watching him, and making sure he's doing according to code, and he's doing it properly.
Also ensures that he learns his trade.
Exactly. And five years should be a reasonable amount of time. Oswego has ten. At the end of those five years, he can apply for an exam if he has a one-year residency in Oswego County. Now, that may not sound fair, but we have men coming in from Lafayette, Cortland, Watertown, Messina, wanting to sit for Fulton licenses. And there's usually a particular reason, like the Y or Kmart or whatever. They'll come in, do the job, and leave, and they've got a Fulton license up in Watertown somewhere. We think it's only fair that if the man has a plumbing license, he should be a resident of Oswego County, not just Fulton. So, if a man wants to do business in the City of Fulton, in Oswego County, he should at least live here. I think that's fair. Journeymen have to have a three-year apprenticeship registered and two years of journeyman before they can sit for the test. We've set that up with Bracy Towns and a plumbing inspector's office to register as an apprentice. So, your time is legal. We don't have to worry about, are you lying? Did you make it up? And who can verify it? Those are simple changes. I've added testing for master's license once a year on November or at the discretion of the board. We never had that in the code before. It wasn't fair for someone who wanted to take a test and not have any particular date as when he could take that test.
You mean, there never was a date before?
No. Well, we can give it to you three years from now or five years from now.
Oh.
So, now, it's every November or at the discretion of the board. And journeyman will be every six months, May and November. So, we're trying to be fair to everyone. I know there are men out there that work for fathers and grandfathers who have been licensed plumbers. We wanna give them a chance to earn a living at the same trade. So, I've tightened it up for the plumber, made it a little easier for the outsider, but we still have some regulations they have to adhere to. And the rest of it has already been there. You have copies of that. So, the things I've mentioned are the simple changes that we're making. And it's fallen not only for the protection of the homeowner and the resident of Fulton, so everything is done according to code and the health department, but it's also to protect the plumber who is paying $300,000 life insurance policies, $50 fees, and everything else that's required of us as licensed plumbers. I had a question in the back about can I do plumbing in my own house? Publicly, I'll say you can do plumbing in your own house as long as it's inspected and it's done according to the code.
Yes, I understand that anybody can do their own work, but they do still, it still has to pass inspection.
Right.
Al, I'd like to ask you a question if I could.
Yes, sir.
You were saying that this makes it easier for outsiders. Can you tell me how it applies to our people that might wanna do work outside of this city? How the reciprocation goes from other municipalities?
We have a reciprocating license with Oswego, the City of Oswego, but not Onondaga County. Onondaga County is in here continuously.
But you can't have reciprocal licenses, Al. I thought we agreed on that.
Well, it was there when the old board was sitting on this thing. I just got here. I'm here four months, and I see some discrepancies that we're trying to change and make right. But we can work in Oswego and they can work in Fulton. That's about as close as we get to a county license. But Onondaga County doesn't...
You're saying we can, they can't?
Onondaga County does come here, but we can't go to Onondaga County. And the way to get around that is we only have licenses in Fulton and Oswego. So, they can work in Volney, Granby, Minnetonka, Blaskai, anywhere in Oswego County outside of Fulton and Oswego. But we can't work anywhere in Onondaga County. So, the only way they can come into Fulton and Oswego is to do a $100,000 job and pay the price for doing it, and we'll give them the license, which they don't do for us. So, we want the contractor to be able to have an outside plumbing contractor if he chooses. So, we have to make some stipulation for that. We don't wanna sew it up completely because that's, we're told we're being unfair. So, we're trying to stretch it for everybody. So, we can't work in Oswego, they can't work here. And what the mayor mentioned is another legal problem we're discussing right now and have been for four months. The reason for the reciprocating license was to honor each other's city, but the state code says you have to sit for a test.
That's right.
You can't take...
Also violates the antitrust law. Can't do it, Al. Al, I wanted you to know that he did a lot of work on this and trying to put this together together with the city attorney, and I think that what they've done is an excellent job and it cleans up some discrepancies in the existing code prior to this time and strengthens it and I think makes it a lot better code and fairer to both plumbers and the people of this city. Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone from the council? Public hearing is closed.
I'll move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried? Two, please.
At a meeting the council held on April 6th, the city clerk was authorized to advertise for public hearing at this meeting of April 20th. Relative to proposed Local Law Number 2 of 1993, which would amend Chapter 78 of the Fulton City Code regarding rental permit fees, the mayor declares the hearing open.
Comment? Ron?
Joe, could you read what Local Law 2, this first one?
Local Law 2 reads subsection 7825(c) rental permit fees. A, rental permits shall be required for each rental dwelling unit. These permits will be valid for two years. B, upon filing of an application for a rental permit, a fee in the amount of $30 for each rental shall be paid to the Chamberlain of the City of Fulton. C, no fee shall be required for property owned and leased or occupied by the City of Fulton. This fee waiver, however, still shall not exempt or preclude any inspections as required by this section.
Okay. My first statement is, you already once passed this fee. Why are we having a public hearing now?
Because a question was raised as to whether it was legal without a public hearing. So, to nail it down, we've decided to have a public hearing.
Now, to state my position, I'm not against rental permits. I think it's good. We need code enforcement. And code enforcement benefits everybody in this city. All businesses, retail, commercial, industrial, and all the residents. If we can upgrade our code enforcement, let's upgrade our housing. But code enforcement should be a part of the everyday business of this city, and it should be subsidized like every other part of the city through our property taxes, not through a special fee. Landlords are already paying more than their fair share of property taxes. As you can see through the graphs, our tax, city taxes have increased 75% in the last five years. That is a heavy burden to put on landlords. They cannot increase rents at this rate. If you rent to a community development agency, people that are on HUD programs, HUD allows a federal government a 2.5% increase in rent. Does not cover the cost of maintenance, taxes, and insurance that are increased year after year. If the city needs revenue, I think they should start looking at the unequal assessments on the properties within the city. I gave you a copy of the major assessments in the city, how many exemptions that you have given in the past five years. I think $3 or $4 million, $2.4 million in assessment differences since 1988 to 91. The city should look at all exemptions that have been given in the past and find a way to correct what has become an unfair practice and competition for landlords, including exemptions for people that move rentals. The tenants cannot afford any more hidden taxes on their rents. The constant increases in Niagara Mohawk bills for the heat and lights is becoming nearly impossible for these people to make ends meet. And as landlords, we cannot absorb these extra costs. So, you're hurting us, you're hurting everyone that lives in the city. With 2,400 rental units, that's a lot of people that you're affecting. Trying to make up the shortfalls in the budget through these type of hidden taxes is totally unfair. I gave you a copy of the City of Oswego's rental permit ordinance, of which they have 3,500 units. They charge no fee. It is part of their everyday doing business along with everything else within the city. The City of Oswego has one housing inspector full-time that does nothing but inspect the apartments. So, you need no extra personnel to do this job. You need just one person, that's all that person does, day after day, is inspect apartments. So, your argument that the money is needed to carry this out is false. It's not needed to carry this program out. The rental permit we need, the inspections we need to upgrade our housing, with the fees on just the segregation of a certain few businesses, landlords, whatever you wanna call us, is totally unfair. Thank you.
Yes, Fred?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to enter the Common Council. I would like to speak on behalf of Topat Towers. The way the proposed Local Law is advanced at this point in time, it would include Topat Towers. We are inspected by the state, at least the Bay Area faces, number one. But number two, we've been in operation for about 16 to 17 years, and I'm sure that there's never been a complaint ever made to the city about the apartment of Topat Towers. We are not a problem that requires inspection. We just feel it would be counterproductive to have Topat Towers, have inspections of this nature. I would like to point out further that this year, we have spent close to $100,000 to alleviate some of the property problems in the area. I just point that out to show that we are trying to be a useful, productive citizen, you know, in downtown Dallas. But I can't see a justification to have Topat Towers pay a fee for inspections that will never take place, nor should they take place. There's absolutely no need for inspections here.
I think that probably we've had more complaints about housing conditions since I became mayor than any other city problem, and some of them pretty bad. The only way we're going to rectify them is first to find out what they are and where they are. And to find, in order to do that, we have to make inspections. And frankly, we don't have enough personnel to do that, and we need the money to get the personnel to do the job.
It should be put in the general budget now. It should not be segregated.
Well, Ron, why should everybody else in the city pay for inspecting apartments? Well, I don't see how that's true. Incidentally, one of the reasons why you don't have any fees in Oswego is you got three landlords that are on the Common Council.
It benefits everyone because it...
How does it benefit everyone?
It upgrades everyone's market value, up their gravity, and everything around them is kept up. Everyone's benefit...
Well, that's pretty good, Ron, but I don't think that really follows. And you can't charge, you can't pick out a few and charge a fee without charging a fee for everyone.
Can I ask you a question, Mayor? Are there other fees charged for inspections of businesses, industry, residential homeowners?
No.
Is there any inspections of these other properties?
No. People don't live on those properties.
Does that matter?
I think it does, sure.
Why is that?
Well, because...
Are you looking at the value and the condition of every property in Fulton?
No, it isn't based on the value. It's based on...
Let me just finish my question.
No, let me tell you what it's based on.
Okay.
You asked the question.
Well, I didn't finish the question without that.
It's based on the proper living conditions for people that live in these places. That's what it's based on.
What about proper work conditions and proper...
Well, I think you know...
Value of property and aesthetic...
Counselor, I think you're very well aware that there are federal and state agencies that address those problems.
Well, I guess our question is, as landlords and having to pass the fees on, like Ron mentioned, the poor tenant or renter, of which there are 2,400 plus, has to absorb this cost. And is it fair to them? Or are they being discriminated against?
I know they're being discriminated against. You're calling apples, you're distinguishing, you're trying to call apples and oranges the same thing. It's for their benefit to begin with, so that they do derive a benefit from it.
But you talk, Al talks about our sister city of Oswego and how we like to be consistent with them. They are doing the same inspection.
Well, he was talking about plumbing. We're talking about housing.
Why can't we compare apples with apples with what's surrounding us as to what charges are being put on the landlord and passed on to the tenant?
Maybe Oswego doesn't care.
For inspections.
I've heard a lot of horror stories about Oswego landlords.
I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's fair to say they don't care. I feel very strong that the landlord and the renters are being discriminated against. I don't see any reason why this can't be passed on throughout, if you feel it's needed, throughout the whole tax base. I mean, based on my calculations, if you're gonna raise $72,000 every two years and if it's $36,000, those fees will be easily absorbed in your agency and in your administrative costs. In addition, it seems to me that...
Wait a minute, I don't understand what you're talking about. Agency and administrative costs? What are you talking about?
There's gonna be a lot of paperwork, a lot of administrative work to carry out this function that you're talking about.
True.
And I don't see where the benefit is to raise money. I think you're gonna be digging a hole a little bit deeper than maybe the $36,000 a year can generate for you.
You're probably one of those landlords that does have decent places. Unfortunately, that's not true of everybody in the city. Because, Ruth, you can't impose a fee on one and not impose it on others. Because that is discrimination.
Precisely. My point, how can you impose a fee on the tenant who will be absorbing the fee? How can you impose it on them but not homeowners, residential homeowners? I just fail to believe that it's that discriminatory.
Well, we're not imposing the fee on the tenant in the first place.
Well, do you think that the landlord, with the rising cost of Niagara Mohawk bills, with the rising cost of taxes here in this city, is going to continue to absorb costs? It has to be passed on to the poor tenant.
Somehow, some way, we have to meet these problems that have never been met before. And for the first time, maybe in the history of this city, that this administration is trying to do something about these problems. In order to do it, we need the money to do it.
I wouldn't...
You can't ask the taxpayers...
Discriminating against tenants.
You don't have to raise your voice to me.
I'm very upset because I got a letter in the mail...
Well, I'm sorry if you're upset.
...with no warning that effective January 1st, we would be hit with a $30 per unit assessment. No warning, no forewarning, no opportunity to argue it, just you will have to pay starting January 1st, 1993. I don't think that's fair.
Title of your opinion.
Well, I'd like to say I'd like to have the city word for us as well as us pay out for the city. Last week, I was down to the, I filed a small claims court. I found, I went to file for a tenant that had stopped me for $460 plus another month's rent where he stayed and didn't move out. So, I put in it. So, we're talking almost $1,000. I went to file at the small claims office. I got a terrible reception. I was told, I asked the gal in there, I said, "Now, can you tell me how long it'll be or approximately be..."
Ruth, let me interrupt you a minute, Ruth.
No, sure.
Listen, wait a minute. I don't mind, you know, feeling the problems and the questions regarding the city that we have something, I have something to do with. I don't have anything to do with city court. You know that. No, but none of us do. City court is outside of our jurisdiction. It's a state court.
Okay, but you're asking me to pay for my tenant and yet the city does not wanna help us at all.
Ruth, let me ask you, let me ask you something. Why would you let a tenant run up $1,000 in arrears?
I didn't. I didn't. He's under lease, okay? His warranty...
Why didn't you evict? Why didn't you evict him?
I was in Florida, and I kept, I kept calling him. He said that he's gonna pay. He said it's in the mail. Okay, so...
You can't really blame us or city court for that.
Don't get off on such tangent. I wanna tell you how I was... I could go back and ask how long it was gonna be, she says, "I have no idea."
I don't mind your complaints about the city.
I have a fantastic city court, and she says, "I have no idea." And that is the third time this happened to me. Now, I don't like it, and I, I think maybe you guys might, might try to do something about it. If you're gonna ask, ask for fees from us and racism taxes and everything, I think something should be done.
I hope it's not about city court.
No?
Okay.
I would just like to make a comment about the discussion that's going on on the floor. We're talking about discrimination, we're talking about property values, we're talking about a lot of things except the real issues, and that's that if you go up and down the streets in this city, at least one house in every block, and usually, it's an income, excuse me, usually is an income property, not saying that the people that are here are the ones that own them. If you want to protect your income property, this is what we're trying to do by making sure that we can inspect and make sure the property is up in living standards, so that we don't discriminate against the tenant, which also has rights and should have the same living conditions that everybody else has. At the same time, it ensures your property value will be maintained, so that if the guy next door has an income property to you, and he lets it run down, it doesn't degrade the value of your property. And what we're talking about, the thirty dollar fee that the man said was the fee, it's exactly right, but it's for two years, it amounts to a dollar and twenty-five cents a month. That's what it amounts to.
Let me say something, let me say something. Let me tell you, there's no need whatsoever not to penalize these landlords and landladies that crap up our city. How many are there in this town? We should know how many there are that do that.
Just make the rounds of the city, of the city.
Not all of the other tenants that keep their properties up, pay out taxes and pay out fees and everything else. Why don't you penalize these landlords and landladies that crap up big, darned houses? You concede it at the right old time.
You missed the whole point, Anne, of what, uh, yes, you did. Let me finish, please. The whole point is that we need a way to find out where the places are, who is in violation, what the violations are, so that we can-
What if, what if a community detects the tax rules? You could find-
Sit down, you had, sit down, you've had your chance.
Based on what David-
Sit down, or I'll call the police.
Listen, George, based on what you said, David, why shouldn't we inspect all residential homeowners? Based on what you're saying on property value, and not bring it down?
See, I don't need to sit down. Look, we got a lot of landlords here who obviously feel that, you know, it's an unfair, uh, assessment, okay? And I, I don't have any quarrel with that, but let's please have a little order. I just wanted to finish what I was trying to say, what Dave was talking about, namely that we are trying to put these places out of business that are degrading the neighborhood, including your business, your places, and all you gotta do is walk around the city to see that. It doesn't take anything, uh, special to find it out, and they've been doing it for a long time. So if you don't think it's worth a buck and a quarter, a, a, a month to achieve that, then I don't think you're being very far sighted.
You know, not, not to interrupt or go in and behead a view, Don, but, uh, Ronnie, there are many people that are on assistance in the city of Fulton, that's no secret, okay? They operate under gun, guidelines of HUD housing or whatever, coming through the Community Development Agency. I wish that some of you landlords, if you haven't already, would read the minimum specifications of government subsidized housing. It nearly qualifies with a cardboard box for a place to stay and a candle to heat and light with. It's almost that dr- trust me, trust me, if you read the, the actual paragraphs and the content of that, the, the minimal standards are so poor, it's unbelievable, because it not only is in New York State that they apply, they apply nationwide, which is not just in the northeast corner, but all over the nation.
That's ridiculous.
Maybe it's tax.
Mayor, Council, my name's Phil Blair. Uh, I agree with your principle with the, the bad apartments in the city of Fulton. I don't believe in the way you're going about it. I think what you should do is maybe set up a system where when the, an apartment is vacated, before it can be re-rented, there should be an inspection made at a ten dollar fee, in which case, after the inspection was made, a certificate of compliance would be issued, which would have to go to Niagara Mohawk before any power was turned on to that apartment. And I think you would find you would get a better reception from the, the rental people and the apartment owners on that basis, because we're gonna get into, into a situation where we're gonna be invasion of privacy. You're gonna go up and knock on somebody's door, and they're not gonna let you in, and we're gonna run into a hassle. Because you can't arbitrarily go up to anybody's apartment or house and invite yourself in. That's one of the laws we have in the United States. That's what keeps our sanctity in our houses. But if the, the apartment is vacated, Niagara Mohawk says the power's been turned off in this apartment, it's, it's been vacated, then at that time, we should go make an inspection on that apartment, make sure it's up to code. If it's up to code, we will issue a certificate of occupancy, which will have to go to Niagara Mohawk before the power's turned on, and for a ten dollar fee, because some, some people have been living in these apartments for five, six, ten years, and some apartments are in nice shape. And you're gonna find your biggest turnover is gonna be in some of these dumpy apartments. So why penalize the people and make the people with nice apartments pay a fee when they shouldn't have to? That's all I have to say.
Now, one, one thing I forgot, uh, you take that thirty dollar fee over two years, which translates into a buck and a quarter a month, and then, because it's tax deductible, the net loss probably is about two-thirds of that amount. And I find it awful hard to believe that that's something you can't afford. Ron?
Uh, David, you kind of agreed with me, but I don't think you realize that.
Oh, yeah, I do.
Uh, the point is, I don't think anyone here is against the rental permit. You're missing the point. We want the places cleaned up. Everyone does, everyone in this city does. No one's against that, no one's against the inspections. What we're against is the segregation of the fee against a certain few businesses within this city, when it's something that, as you stated, David, helps the whole neighborhood. Everyone in the city should contribute to this cause of upgrading our city's housing stack, not just a certain few business people. And that's what you're putting the, the brunt of it on. And it's not just the thirty dollars. It's thirty dollars now, in two years it could be forty, in four years it could be sixty. Once it's in, it can be raised at the whim of the council, whoever is on the council at that time. You know, if you want to become a big government, I mean, this is almost like socialism, if you want to become a big government, that's what you're be, trying to become. We've had enough regulations. You're starving the businesses.
If it was socialism, Ron, you wouldn't be in business.
But it's the regulations of socialism is what you're trying to come up, come across with here, with the fees.
Well, I think if you, uh, were to hold a general city meeting and told all the rest of the residents of the city, private homeowners, that they were gonna pay for inspection of your apartments, you'd see a-
Their house, their own. Their house, their own.
I'm talking about as far as paying, uh, an inspection fee of apartment houses, if you told them they were gonna pay for that, you would get a heck of a lot bigger outburst than you got here.
What about the citizens who are paying for the trash pickup that is in their property tax, who don't even have the city pick up their trash?
What do you mean, it's in their property tax?
Part of our property tax is a bill for, for, uh, garbage pickup.
That's paid by, by the fees.
Not all of it, it's not all valid.
Certainly is.
Ronnie, that's what we're trying to do when we raise the stickers on, on garbage.
For trash, for trucks, buying trucks, everybody's buying them, yet a lot of the companies in the city do not have garbage pickup, if they're, so pay their fair share for garbage pickup.
What we've tried to do as a council is make people pay for services that they're using. A reason we raised garbage stickers is that, uh, people complain, businesses, saying, "Why should I pay for, uh, for the city to pick up residents' garbage when I have my own private service?" So we raised the fees to try and cover that total cost. People were saying, uh, "Why should I pay for a, a fee for kids to skate over in recreation park?" We raised the skating fees, because we, that's in our general budget also. Uh, people said, "Why should I pay to have, uh, a building inspector go out and inspect a building that someone else is building that I don't, will never put an addition on my house?" So we raised, uh, other fees. What we've tried to do is make people who are using services pay for them, and this really, uh, is the same thing. We're trying to say, "Hey, you use a service of a building inspector to come and inspect an apartment, you should pay for it, not another resident." Uh, what would happen if we didn't do this? If we didn't, if we didn't do this, and we go along the same as we are, next year you're gonna get the increase in your taxes anyway.
Do we charge businesses a fireman's back? Are there businessmen in the state, retail business, commercial business, that charge for firemen inspection?
I don't, I don't think we, we, I don't think we charge for fireman inspection, but it's not a bad idea. I mean, we're, we're just, we're just getting to these things.
Jack, Jack, I brought up in December, when this was first going on, we wanted the inspections. But why penalize the ones where there's gonna be no paperwork? They walk in and everything's okay. If you fail, charge your fee.
But there's still costing us to send a person to your house for the inspection.
It's possible you send a person to anywhere to do anything in the city. That's right, my point is, it should be a, just a part of the normal operating expenses of the budget of the city of Fulton.
But then, then, then a person who doesn't have an apartment is paying for someone to come to your apartment to inspect.
Well, and there's people doing things that I pay for that does not contribute to me. Uh, at the beginning of November or December, when you started, you told me Oswego charged. And I know for a fact that you went to Steve Loon and asked him, "How can we raise some money?" He said Oswego charges for fees. Well, they don't. Nobody's doing their homework.
Well, it's, like I said, it's one, it was one of our goals, was to try and raise money and to assess people for what they're using in the city. And we've done it with skating, we've done it with, with permits, and now we're doing it with building fees.
No, no, let's give Anne a chance. You've had the floor for quite a while. Anne?
Mr. Mayor, can you clarify how this fee will help building code enforcement?
Yes, because it simply provides more money to get the help that we need for code enforcement, and this is certainly one aspect of it. And if we're going to clean up the problems that we have in code enforcement, then we have to have the funds to do it with, and we don't have those funds.
Then to earmark the money that comes in from these rental fees to use for the building code department?
That's right.
This money would be earmarked for the building code department?
That's right.
And then will this be an increment, increment to what the building code department has right now, so that, you know, the building code department would go out and hire additional staff to do this?
Yes, that's obviously gonna be, uh, necessary.
So that, so the intention then is that this money is gonna be used to hire additional people, so that building code enforcement, you know, can be thoroughly done?
Yes, after we accumulate enough funds. Pardon?
Would we do that right away?
No, we have to accumulate the funds first. You know, that isn't gonna be possible right away. Yes?
Building code enforcement strictly for apartments, or for residential homeowners also?
No, this is aimed at apartments.
And once again, I ask the question, are apartments the only buildings that are-
Under code?
Under, that, that you are concerned with, with meeting value? What about the residential-
No, this is going to increase our code enforcement burden.
The question is, why are apartments being discriminated against? Aren't there residential properties that also are under code, or maybe are a deterrent to the rest of the neighborhood, like you talked about? I don't understand why it's just rental apartments and not every residential home.
As far as code violations in buildings are concerned, apartments is the big problem, probably ninety percent of our problems.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Do you know what this caller's name is and who he represents?
Yeah, would you like to give her name, please?
Peter Campacilli, Holly Gardens, Auburn.
Thank you very much.
If I could, Your Honor, to answer his question.
Yeah.
Some of the residences in the city that have not complied with code, and they have been inspected, have been cleaned up, and they have been assessed a lot more than thirty dollars for the cleanup process and billed accordingly on their tax bill, so they're paying a lot more than thirty bucks over two years.
How did you provide for inspection? Just curious.
On request of violation of code.
Who requested the violation of code?
Oh, wait a minute, now you're getting into a lot of detail that, you know, if you want that information, you can ask, you can ask the, uh, zoning officer. Diana?
I own a house, I don't own any apartments. I don't expect to pay any fee for anybody inspecting apartment houses, because the landlord is getting the benefit of their apartments. If there is a house, like you're just gonna say, I was gonna say, they condemn houses if they are in rough shape. I know there's a lot of houses, private people who have residences that don't keep up their property, but if it gets bad enough that the neighbors complain about it to the proper places, they are put on warning to clean it up, or else they're gonna condemn them or clean them up somehow, but I'm not gonna pay for anybody who's renting apartments a fee of any kind. I don't know if you have to pay your fee or not, but I don't intend to pay for it, not as a resident.
Ron, have you got something new to add? All right.
I'm sorry.
It's all right, I guess.
You know, it's, it's not like we're not paying our fair share according to everyone else in the city. Our taxes, in nineteen eighty-nine, we paid sixty-five thousand dollars in property taxes in this city. In nineteen ninety-three, we've paid ninety-six thousand dollars in taxes this year. That's a thirty thousand, eight hundred dollar increase in just package books, property taxes in the city. Now, that's a lot of properties, but to make the income, the way I look at discrimination is we have to have all this property to make a certain income, where another retail business only needs a assessment of a five or six thousand dollar building to make the same amount of money. So we're paying more than our fair share in property taxes to the city, and as the motherfucking, the motherfucking, the exceptions, uh, Meadow Brook Estates, the city sold us out, the council, not the council here, they sold us out. They're paying eleven thousand dollars, seven hundred and forty-two dollars in lieu of taxes this year, when according to their assessment, they should be paying the city two hundred and four thousand dollars. Fulton Mill Apartments have a forty-year tax exemption, Meadow Brooks was twenty-five years. This year, they're paying nineteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars in property taxes.
Ron, let me, let me say this. This was all done before this administration. We had nothing to do with it, there's nothing we can do about it, because it isn't contractual. We're addressing one simple problem here tonight, and that is the inspection fees, okay? And I don't know why you want to go into all this, because it has nothing to do with this problem.
It, it does to this point. I'm trying to prove the point, that we are more than paying, we have never asked for an exemption, or an assessment reduction. We are more than paying our fair share to the city in property and real estate taxes and school taxes, where, and these other fees, it has to stop the investment. These fees are totally unfair, unsegregated here.
Anyone else?
That our taxes go up too as a private homeowner, and we don't count, turn around and increase our income, which have steady income. We still pay our fair share. Where do they think they're not paying their fair share? They're taking in a lot more.
And when their taxes go up, isn't that usually incorporated into their rental fees as a rule? It usually goes up every year? You have a certain percentage of monthly rental, they go up? There, I don't think there's one rental place that doesn't go up every year.
No, 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 that's not true. No, that's not true. I wish it was.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think anybody is questioning the fact that there is a lot of housing in this city that needs to be upgraded. Most of that is rental housing, it's owned by landlords. Renting houses to other people is a business. It is as much a business as selling food, or selling gasoline, or selling greeting cards. It is a business that has to carry its own weight. The city doesn't have enough money at this point to hire somebody to enforce the code for, the code requirements for the, um, rental housing. The only question then is are the landlords going to pay for that, or are the property owners, who are not landlords, and who've done, who don't bear any of the responsibility for this, are they gonna pay for it? I think it's only fair that the prop, the landlords, the people who can control that property, who if they get together, can maybe exert influence on other landlords to clean up their act.
up their act, I think it's only fair for them to pay for it, not those of us who are paying property taxes, and who don't have any responsibility for the problems with this housing.
Thank you. Al?
I wanna ask you about this discrimination thing. You're gonna inspect each and every apartment in the city of Fulton, no matter how good it is or how bad it is.
Right.
Right?
Right.
That's what you're saying?
Yeah.
I don't believe you. You'll pick out, you'll pick out the bad ones and give them a hard time, and the ones who are run properly and doing well and are top off, you'll ignore. That's discrimination. 'Cause you won't get around and, you won't have the manpower to inspect every apartment in the city of Fulton. So, you'll pick out who you want to inspect. And everybody that keeps their property up, and their apartments up, won't get inspected, but they'll pay the thirty-dollar fee. And if I have to pay it on a hundred and seven apartments, I wanna be inspected, each and every one. Or I'll yell discrimination.
Al, you got a question? Anyone else? Anything new?
Yes, thirty dollars is not enough to inspect twenty-five hundred apartments.
Oh, okay. Well, raise the fee.
No.
You heard it from one of your own?
I heard it from one of my own, because if you do inspect the twenty-five hundred, there's a point I tried to bring out in the beginning, thirty-six thousand dollars is gonna be absorbed like that. And like Ron said, in the next year, it'll be more, the year after, it'll be more, it'll never end. And we have Niagara Mohawk to answer your question, somebody asked about the rent being increased by the year. We can't hit the rents up high enough to absorb the increases in taxes, Niagara Mohawk, and now fees.
Well, I think the answer to that is, then you better find another business.
Okay. You're gonna answer the, uh...
Ruth?
I put an ad in the paper for this apartment for me renting, and it was in, uh, what is today? It was in yesterday's paper. You know how many, how many, it was hundred approved. I mean, that's the ad. And utilities paid. Do you know how many calls I got on that apartment?
No idea.
Twenty-one, with one ad. Does that tell you something? Tells you that we have a shortage of good housing in the city.
Well, if you have a shortage, you ought to be able to raise a buck and a quarter a month to pay for the inspection fee.
You can't, not with us, you can't.
How can you in the city of Fulton? The people aren't, the economy's not that healthy.
George, yes, follow us. Landlords got out of business, who the hell could afford all the public out?
That's right.
Well, I, I knew, I knew darn well nobody was gonna go out of business. Yes?
How come with the current housing laws, you can take a homeowner's home and condemn it? Why can't you do the same thing to an apartment house? Why aren't the existing laws that are on the books any good?
Before you can condemn it, you gotta inspect it.
Well, you don't have to have a permit to go inspect a homeowner's home.
No, but if we're gonna inspect it, we wanna get paid for it. You know, as, as, wait a minute, as John, wait a minute, as John pointed out, and David, and myself, we just can't afford to do this, we can't afford to get the extra help that we need to enforce the code enforcement law, and it's not fair to place that burden on the other taxpayers, the single-family homes. You're the people that are in business, you're the people who should be paying for that fee, and it's that simple. And if that were the case in any other inspection, or any other kind of specialized fee for someone else, and you were paying for it through your taxes, I'm sure you would complain just as loudly as you are now. So, we're really putting the burden where it belongs, the person who is in business, that's all.
Our taxes pay for Section 8 housing as it is, not even if it's a pay more. Everybody who works pays for Section 8 housing.
Yeah, including me.
Right.
I just wanna say, the houses that don't pass ought to pay for the fee. That'd be an incentive to keep them up.
Pardon, ma'am?
The houses that don't pass inspections should be able to pay the fee, or be fined for having their places run down. That'd be an incentive to keep their places up, you'll have a lot less places to inspect.
Right.
I'm not sure we could do that.
Shouldn't have to pay if they didn't pass.
No, I, I don't think we could, we could do it. Or, yes, huh?
Have you, have you an idea how, how you're gonna implement this? How you're gonna start doing this when they apply for a, or when they move out?
Not really, I don't know what the mechanics are.
I was just asking how they proposed to implement this, if they were going to, when they apply for the fee, or when the people move out? This is, this is a tremendous job.
It's, uh, right now, two-year basis, when the applications are done, uh, it goes in the computer. At the end of two years, it'll ring up, and renew.
Okay, as it's done right now, there, there is a registration form with all the pertinent information that's mandated by law. When the form is brought back, it is put on file, inspection is done forthcoming afterwards. The file is put into a, uh, the computer and will ring up within two years. The inspection period is at a two-year period, not each time it comes vacant. And that was built around the census and the CHAS report, where average turnover of rental housing is every two years.
Phil?
I got a question, though. What if the tenant doesn't wanna let the party inspector into the building to look at them?
Then it's up to the landlord.
Yeah, but the land, as long as the landlord doesn't, has specific rights too. I mean, he can't go in and tell his tenant that he's kinda left this guy in.
Why? Landlord has access to the rooms? Oh, yes, yes. Yes, you do.
Yeah, but you don't arbitrarily go into somebody's room, whether you're landlord or not.
Well, if, you don't, if you don't prevent inspection, then there'll be a fine.
See, what you're, what you're doing is, you're starting to go back to this old, uh, housing code that Mr. Boynton tried to push on the city, and you're gonna work yourself into a situation.
No, Phil, this, there's nothing like that code, I went through that code.
What you're doing is, is you're setting a precedence where you're gonna be able to go arbitrarily, and you're gonna spread it all, homeowners in town.
That's, that's an exaggeration. The, uh, the zoning inspector's gonna contact landlord for permission to inspect, and I can't conceive that any landlord or tenant's going to arbitrarily refuse that.
Oh, okay.
And if they do, then there'll be a fine, yes?
Your Honor, uh, while you were judge, I had a tenant in here that damaged an apartment. You said, "I didn't see it happen, so how could I prove that he done it?" And I said, "Well, can I have to sit there and watch those tenants all the time?" You said, "It's against the law for me to sit there and watch those tenants." So, how is, is somebody gonna take the inspector and inspect if the tenant doesn't want it?
That's right.
Also, another thing, took me seven years to get two trees down on Worth Street. I appreciate it, they're finally down. But they broke...
Wait a minute, seven years, that was five years and a half, and three quarters before I became mayor, right?
I went through...
Are you gonna lay that whole thing on me?
I went, I went through two aldermen to get the, finally, I wrote a duet letter, and the trees can count. But...
Thank you for that.
They, they broke three, these are the sidewalk. I complained to John, they replaced one of them, but they've replaced it crooked, they only had the forms in print. The other two are still broken, I talked to John on a couple occasions on the phone about it, and it's still not fixed. What do I have to do now, write you another letter?
Call me. Call me.
This is two oh four Worth Street, you can put it down in your...
Call me.
Also, I complained to the police about tenants throwing stuff out on the lawns, and on the sidewalk, or between sidewalk and street. They say it's my problem. Now, he, he said that you drive around, you can tell which one's rental property. Sure, because the tenants are on welfare.
Let me ask you this.
What?
What does it all got to do with inspection?
It's got, because he made a statement, that you drive around, you can tell rental property. Sometimes you can by the outside of the building. Other times, the buildings are nice, but the yards are cruddy, or they got a, keg of beer out in the front yard, sitting there getting drunk. But my, my place, I have to keep going down and raking the yard, get the peanut chunks out, out of there, because there's a lady that likes to feed the squirrel's peanuts. She doesn't see anything wrong with it. But now, if that's making the rental property look bad, well, it's bad. My wife's already mad at me for talking.
One more, and that's it, yes?
We asked this baddie to entertain the two suggestions that were put on the floor. One was to inspect and charge only upon vacancy, and two was to penalize or fine those that are in violation. Could you please entertain that? Especially the first one, to inspect and charge upon vacancies.
Okay, the ordinance that's now before the board cannot be modified at this time, because there's been a public hearing as to exactly what was going to be offered this meeting. I think your suggestions are good suggestions, and the board will consider it at a later date, when they can make modifications to the proposal that's before them now. Public hearing is closed.
George, I wanted to say one thing. I was gonna say something.
Ross, you're only gonna open the door.
No, no. Okay, I'd like to say something in reference to the fees. Part of this came about because of, I was on the code enforcement committee, and because of my ward deteriorating, we needed some rules and regulations. The objective was to assure a safe environment, adequate housing, and contribute to the aesthetic value of the neighborhoods. Money was never a motivator when I was talking about enforcing the code. The money was suggested by Steve Lund that we should charge fees. We don't understand how that office operates and what they need to operate. He told us he needed that to operate, and that's why we went with it. It wasn't something that we came up with on our own, it was suggested to us. If the problems were taken care of in city court, if people were taken in and fined for not keeping their property in, in good condition, I'd be more than willing to forego the fees.
Resolve that, now therefore be resolved that local law two of nineteen ninety-three, which would amend Chapter Seventy-eight of Fulton City Code, is hereby adopted in its entirety as per task.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
The roll call vote.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
Motion's carried, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next item we have, Kami Hadlow from the county is going to update us on the latest recycling.
you're all gonna be very much involved.
I believe there's some new additions. Oh my God. Is there more?
I would just like to briefly give you an update of the Aswigo County recycling program.
Wait, go away, I'm sorry, Kami, excuse me. Wait, go away, let me talk to you, will you? Stick, stick around.
I will.
All right. I'm sorry, Kami.
Could we have some?
Okay.
I'd just like to give you a brief update on the Aswigo County recycling program. I'm sure everyone is aware that we've been recycling for about a year countywide. The city of Fulton has been mandatorily recycling since nineteen ninety in a pilot program. The program's been very successful to date, and I'd like you to be on the lookout for this flyer that's gonna be in a lot of the newspapers in the county, indicating what the new items that we're adding to our mandatory recycling program. Just briefly, the three new items include gable top milk and juice cartons, empty aerosol cans, and textiles. Businesses, in addition to this, will be asked to mandatorily recycle their business paper. Now, I'd like to briefly go through those, explain what each item is, and then I'll field your questions. The gable top milk and juice cartons are any type of carton with a gable top, very simple. Any kind of milk or juice carton, some of the Downey refills and items like this. Any size and type carton is acceptable. There are some juice cartons that have the plastic pore spout on there. All we ask is that you remove the plastic lid and rinse the cartons. Then we ask that you place the cartons in with your commingled glass, metal, and plastic We're also accepting the popular drink box. These are very popular with kids, any type of drink box. Again, remove the straw and rinse it out. Easily, you could easily just cut the top off and rinse it out. Throw those in with your commingled containers as well. Items that are not acceptable, a lot of people sometimes confuse the same type of container because it is similar, however, the manufacture of this type of container is different from the gable top cartons. What happens with most frozen food containers is that in the manufacturer, the printing on the carton is actually printed onto the paper, and it contaminates the paper fiber. That's making it not acceptable. With the gable top cartons, they have a polyplastic coating on them, and the printing is on the plastic, so that when they send it for remanufacturing to paper products, they separate the polycoating and the printing along with it, and get a high-quality paper fiber that's good for greeting cards and other office paper. So, it's only the gable top cartons and the drink boxes that are acceptable.
Kami, excuse me. On that particular juice carton, do you have to remove the cap?
Yes. You're asked to remove the cap. Throw that in with your recyclables as well, okay? Another item that's not acceptable is the waxy coated corrugated cardboard. I know a lot of the grocery stores... I know a lot of the grocery stores deal with this with their produce. This is an item that's not acceptable because of that wax coating. Don't confuse the wax coating with the polycoating, okay? This is not an acceptable item. Even though it's corrugated, it has the wax coating, it's considered a contaminant. So it can't be acceptable. Okay?
How can we tell the difference?
You can tell, I mean, you can tell a wax coating.
Oh, okay.
The next item is textiles. And with textiles, we take any kind of used clothing, any type of clothing, shirts, pants, bedding, drapes, curtains, anything, as long as it's clean and dry. And it can't be plastic or rubber. Plastic or rubber items are the only types of material that we're not accepting. Along with wet or dirty items.
Mattresses?
No, no mattresses, no rugs, and no carpets. Okay, it's mostly clothing and bedding. We're asking residents to place the materials in a clear plastic bag and put it out for recycling. Don't mix any other recyclables in with your textiles. It's important that they're separate in a clear plastic bag and kept dry. If they get wet, they're considered contaminated and they belong in the garbage. The last item is empty aerosol cans. We get a lot of calls on our hotline about aerosol cans. I'm stressing, empty cans are the only type that are acceptable for recycling. If it's the type that has the removable plastic lid, take the lid off. These are to go in your commingled glass, metal, and plastic. Okay? I can't stress enough, they have to be empty. If you have an aerosol can that has fluid left in it, we ask that you save that for a household hazardous waste collection day. And we run those in the fall. They're highly publicized and it's a free service to county residents. Okay, again, empty aerosol cans only. No batteries. We're still not collecting batteries. Save your household batteries for a household hazardous waste collection day as well. Okay, the last category is office paper and that affects businesses only. Businesses as of May first will be required to recycle their office paper. There are a large number of businesses in Oswego County that are already voluntarily recycling their office paper. And the figures are just in from last year in nineteen ninety-two. On a voluntary basis, businesses in Oswego County recycled over two hundred and forty tons of office paper. And that's just on a voluntary basis and that's an incredible figure. We have flyers for any business owners here. Flyers that are available telling you exactly what's acceptable. Some of the things that includes as acceptable recyclable office paper are white ledger, computer paper, colored ledgers, paper with staples, brochures, envelopes, business forms, pamphlets, and even NCR paper. Okay? You're asked, again, to keep your office paper separate from other recyclable papers. In other words, don't mix things like magazines or catalogs with your office paper. That's because office paper is a separate sort. It's a very, very high-grade paper and the county's getting a lot of money for this. If you mix newspapers in with your office paper, the price that we'll get will go down considerably. Okay? So it's very important that you keep your office paper separate. Put it in a clear plastic bag, separate from your other recyclables. Again, this can't get worse.
Kami, how about things like, well, legal covers? You know, that's heavier.
Some examples that I have right here are items that aren't acceptable. And that's things like the padded envelopes. Fabric tie-back envelopes, kind of a fabric paper. File folders, carbon paper, not to be confused with the NCR paper. Window envelopes with the plastic windows. These are all considered contaminants. Things like napkins, paper towels, and again, the padded envelopes. Okay? And there is a pretty detailed list. If ever you have any questions about any of the items, please feel free to call our number. That's three four nine eight three two nine. It's on all of our publications. And I'm gonna leave these, I hope that you'll pick them up for your use. Telephone books, we are accepting telephone books. Put those in with your newspapers. Okay? There's a farmer up north who is taking the used telephone directories and shredding them and using them for animal bedding. And it's working out great because nobody has hay because of the rainy season last year. So it's working out well. Are there any other questions?
Oswego County been waiting patiently while the rest of civilized world has got these blue trash bins. Are we gonna get any of these things here?
I don't foresee that happening. It's just, it's too much of a cost. It's about, they're about seven dollars a bin. About four years ago when we were doing our research, they were about seven dollars a bin. And we saw that with the weather conditions here and them getting lost in the snow and abused, we decided that it just wasn't worth the taxpayers' money. A lot of the haulers utilize the bins. So you might be able to get one through your hauler. But the county, I don't see the county issuing the bins. It doesn't matter, they end up crushed to begin with.
They can be, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, and I will leave these flyers for you to take.
I have a couple of questions. What do you do with an old fire extinguisher?
That is considered a hazardous waste. The county doesn't take those. And depending on who we contact for our household hazardous waste collection, we might be able to take that. So that would be something, you call our office about the time that we're having collections.
And secondly, what does the county do with all these items?
That's a good question. Markets vary almost on a daily basis. And what we do is we have an individual who is constantly on the phone finding the best possible market for our materials. And we are marketing that, all of the materials that we're collecting.
Does the county receive money for some things?
We're receiving the money and it goes back into the general fund.
Not back to the city from once it came.
The city's all good, you're making money on it?
We're not getting rich off it. I don't have all the figures, but we're not getting rich.
It's gonna cost nothing, a dollar back for the other stuff. So seeing the county's making money, we're paying you taxes each year, over three million dollars. You mean to tell me that they don't cut back on the money the city pays them every year?
I don't see that happening. We're running in the red as far as the solid waste management system, so. Call the county building.
You gotta get your legislator.
Any other questions? I said the money that we collect off, the sale of recyclable items, which is not an astronomical figure by any means right now. All of these markets are, they're very flimsy markets and they're disappearing overnight. But the money that we do receive is going to a general fund, the county's general fund. It pays for all of the county's programs. All of the county, all of the highway programs, solid waste programs, salaries, I mean, everything. All of the county programs.
Terry, you have to get a copy of the county's budget. That'll tell you where that money's going. Well, I imagine all you have to do is go down to the county building and somebody down there will know. Kami? You can look at that in your spare time.
Any other questions?
Kami?
Yes.
Also, by taking this out of the waste stream, doesn't it save the county money by not having to build more landfills?
Absolutely. What, the bottom line here is to save landfill space. I'm not sure if you're aware, the one landfill that we do have here in Oswego County is only a ninety-acre landfill, which really isn't that big. It's only projected to last about another fifty years. Every acre of landfill space that we're using is over a million dollars to build the liner, which is a state mandate, to manage that and then to put a cap on it for, once it's full. So it's a pretty expensive operation. So our goal is to get as much usable material out of the waste stream as we possibly can.
Kami? And that saves us money in building a new landfill. If I could, I was at a meeting last week and the figures that they gave that before we started recycling, it normally took three acres of landfill area to do away and dispose of the trash for the area. And they have got that now through recycling down to three-quarters of an acre annually. So that's quite a reduction and it's cost-saving, so.
And we've only been-
It is working.
Very good. And we've only been recycling mandatorily countywide for just over a year. So it is, it's quite incredible, the savings that we've made.
The textiles that you're getting, do you recycle that and give the textiles to the Salvation Army? Or do you just recycle everything? And will you be getting rid of your Salvation Army bin?
Okay. No, this is working in conjunction with the Salvation Army. For those people that do utilize Salvation Army drop boxes and other charitable organizations, please continue to do so. This textile recycling was to target the people who are not utilizing that. I was up on the landfill last week and as soon as I got out of the truck, the first thing I saw was a bag of old clothes thrown in the garbage. Okay? So we're targeting those people who don't use the charitable organizations. And we're collecting rags and upholstery items and things like that. What's happening is, we're sending it to our market downstate. They will further sort it out and pull out all of the usable clothing, which is being sent to third-world countries and it's being used as actually clothing. Anything that's non-wearable or non-useable is sent to the rag industry and it's made into wiping cloths. So. Was there a question in the back?
Now, wasn't the aggression of the county legislator in building a burning plant that's had probably the greatest impact on reducing the amount of material going into the landfill?
It has had a tremendous impact on that, yes.
You wouldn't have any idea what the ratio was, what before and after?
No, I don't, offhand, I don't have those figures. I could find out for you.
It'd be all right.
Okay. The only thing that's a further separation is the textiles. And we've told haulers and municipalities that that can be collected in with their papers, their mixed newspapers, magazines, and corrugated cardboard. So it's not, you wouldn't need, it's not really considered an additional sort. It's an additional sort within the household. So there shouldn't be any additional fees attached to that.
For offices now, I have an office. Is it all right if we shred the paper? Do you accept that?
Shredded paper is acceptable.
Shred the paper, that's a high-grade paper. So we should have a separate bag just for office paper? What about mail that comes in?
Mail is considered, it's considered junk mail. It's a lower, it's a mixed grade, it's a horrible paper, that goes into the garbage. Don't mix it in with your office paper because it lowers the quality of your office paper. Right. Anything else? Yes. I will, I'll put them in the back of the room. Anything else?
Well, thank you very much, Kami, that was a big help. I know it enlightened me, I hope it did a lot of others. Do you mind if we go ahead? Okay, thanks. Item three, please.
I just wanted to ask the council if they just want to authorize the engineer to prepare specs? Or do they want to authorize the engineer to prepare specs for me to advertise?
No, just to prepare specs.
Okay. Resolved, city engineer is hereby authorized, directed to prepare specifications for tree and stump removal in city Fulton, New York. And said specifications are to be returned to this common council at a future date for competitive bidding.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried. Four, please.
Resolved, city clerk's report of the month of March, an amount of four thousand, four dollars, fifty cents be received, approved, and placed on file.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried.
Joe, I got a question, Joe. How does this compare with like a last March?
Uh, it's up. I don't know exactly how much. I think it's about, I looked to, I think it's about a thousand dollars over last March.
Five, please.
Resolved, city clerk, as records management officer for the city of Fulton, be authorized to dispose of records that no longer have a first purposeful use of legal purpose in accordance with the laws of the state education department and the MU one schedule as per task.
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried. Six, please.
Resolved that pursuant to general municipal law, section thirty-five, the city clerk has presented a report of examination for fiscal period January one, nineteen ninety-one through December thirty-first, nineteen ninety-one, at this common council meeting of April twentieth. And that said report has been filed with him in the office of the city clerk for public inspection. And a notice has been placed in the official city newspaper informing the general public of their rights to inspect the report.
Okay. All right, this is actually item seven.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried.
Okay.
Now, item six. Resolved that the mayor, city attorney, and members of the common council who wish to attend are hereby authorized to attend the New York State Conference of Mayors to be held from June sixth to June ninth, the Nebody Hotel in Ellenville, New York.
Joe, we were only gonna approve three, three places.
Okay.
Or three positions.
Okay, three city officials.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried. Eight, please.
Resolved that chapter one sixty-five subsection one sixty-five fifty-four of Fulton City Code entitled vehicle weight limits be amended as follows. Add to subsection one sixty-five fifty-four vehicle weight limits, East Broadway five-ton limit from Holly Drive East to Twelfth Street. Fay Street five-ton weight limit from Maple Ave to Twelfth Street. And Twelfth Street five-ton weight limit from Emery Street to Fay Street.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried. Nine, please.
Resolved, the common council authorized the payment of the following bills. Jones Chemical, fifteen hundred and ten dollars and ninety-one cents for ferret chloride. Bartlett Tree Experts, eleven hundred and seventy-six dollars for removal of a maple tree. Babcock Oil, forty-four seventy-two eighty-seven for diesel fuel. TCG Materials, Inc., twenty-two eighty-eight sixty-four for blacktop. Aqua, three thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars, sixty-four cents. The above items are budgeted but are over the thousand-dollar charter limit and requires the council's approval.
I'll move it.
Second. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried. Ten, please.
Resolved that chapter one sixty-five, the vehicle and traffic ordinance of the city of Fulton be amended as follows. Delete the following subsections from one sixty-five sixty-one entitled Parking Prohibited Certain Hours. West Broadway, both eight AM to nine PM, Monday through Saturday, from West First Street to West Third Street, except where parking is specifically prohibited. West Broadway, North Side, eight AM to nine PM, Mondays through Saturdays, from West Third Street to West Fourth Street, except where parking is specifically prohibited. West Broadway, South, eight AM to nine PM, Mondays through Saturdays, from West Second Street, South to West Third Street, except where parking is specifically prohibited. Add the following to the subsection one sixty-five sixty-four entitled Time Limit Parking. West Broadway, both nine AM to six PM, two-hour parking from West First Street to West Fourth Street, except where parking is prohibited specifically. Add the following to subsection one sixty-five fifty-eight entitled Parking Prohibited At All Times. On William Giller Drive, both sides from Cheston Street to Lake Shore Drive.
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried. Eleven, please.
Resolved that the mayor be authorized to sign a release of drilling rights for the state of Dorothy Van Buren located at nine oh four South First Street, Fulton, New York.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried. Twelve, please.
Resolved that the chief sewage treatment plant operator is hereby authorized to purchase one Ingersoll Rand compressor and jackhammer from Seneca Supply, Syracuse, New York, a cost of nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars, to be a direct charge to G eighty-one twenty point twenty sanitary sewers account. Be it further resolved, the city chamberlain is authorized and directed to transfer said amount from the G nineteen ninety contingent account to the G eighty-one twenty point- That's what I was told, was a transfer from Donnie Patrick. I don't know. Um, we're gonna place the sign on hold.
No.
It's not gonna do anything, putting it on hold.
Was there, George, was there a problem with that?
Yeah, it was supposed to come out of the sewer account. Wasn't supposed to come out of the contingency account.
Well, Roger's not here. I talked to Donnie Patrick this afternoon about it. I went through the sewer-
Who did I? Told me it was gonna come out of the sewer account.
Well, it is. The sewer account has its own contingency-
The sewer account has its own contingency fund.
Is that it?
Yeah. So it's the sewers contingency fund to the sanitary sewer account. It's not the general budget.
Why would they have a contingency fund?
All three budgets do, the general, the water, and the sewer, all have.
You sure that's the right account?
Yeah.
Okay.
When I had him on the phone, I looked up, I got a copy of the budget down at my shop and, and we both went through it and.
What is this for, Jim? I'm, I'm not aware of this.
To help them with the repairs, that, you know, catch basins and manholes like that when they have to dig out the old, rather than renting a compressor or a jackhammer like that, that will have it. It'll help with the I, I and I project with fixing catch basins.
Do we presently have one? Or is this a new one?
The water, water crew, water garage has one. And they also use theirs when they have to fix water lines and sewer lines like that.
Well, they keep running into a conflict where they both need it at the same time.
Right.
And that I and I is going so fast that they are using it all the time. And making great progress. Okay, wanna thank you.
And hiring the work done by somebody else.
Yeah, much. Yes, they've saved us a lot of money.
I'll move that if there's no other problems.
I don't think you finished it.
Be it resolved that the chamberlain is directed to transfer said amount from the G1990 contingent account to the G8120.20 sanitary sewers account to cover the cost.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried, next item.
Uh, resolved that the zone change request submitted by Phil LaBarge for a change of zone from R1 residential to R2 residential for his property located 1921 Emery Street to allow for a three-car garage with apartment be referred to the planning commission for their review to be returned to this common council at a future meeting.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried, next item, please. Okay, we're... We're gonna hold a public hearing a week from Thursday to rezone the parks. They're gonna be rezoned into a different category than they are at present time, present time there are two, which absolutely prohibits any vending of any kind or any commercial activity. Actually, it should have been done originally when the zoning ordinance was passed. Many cities have done the same thing. And it'll be rezoned so that all the parks will be P1, the exception of Bullhead Point, which will be P2, which will permit vending. The P1 will be permit vending only by special designation by the council for charitable activities. And service organizations. Okay, Joe?
Okay, we're making an announcement right now so to, to let the press know for the three days that there is this public hearing on the 27th, or on the 29th of April, which is a Thursday. Resolved the city clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on Thursday, April 29th at 7:30 PM. Which time? Five? Okay. 5:00 PM. Relative to a proposed local law number three of 1993, which would amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fulton, New York for conversion of city parks from R1, R2 residential to P1, P2 parks, the purpose of designating those areas for vendors to vend their wares.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Other discussion, well, we've already done the mandatory, there really isn't anything left. The first item is, is scratched. Motion to adjourn the executive session.
I'll move it.
Second it?
All in favor? Posed, carried. What?
Had two of them, I don't know how many you want.
Oh, you mean, we're opening up to the public at the time.
You wanna be here all night?